Wendy, are we ready? Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to go ahead and get started now. Can I get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hurd.
Present.
She is here. She went to the restroom.
Commissioner Caliendo.
Here.
Commissioner Scarborough.
Here.
Commissioner Hurd.
Here.
I believe he's on WebEx, we heard.
He hasn't logged on yet, but yeah. He's here.
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 Due to Commissioner Brumfield being on WebEx, do we have a motion to allow participation via extraordinary circumstances through the WebEx platform?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Beatty, seconded by, I'm sorry, who made it? Commissioner Kelly. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes. Please stand for the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance.
Lord, we ask your guidance today as we consider matters that will affect the safety and welfare of many people in our county. Help us to listen with open minds to matters that are important before us and to act on the matters that will benefit those who reside in our area. Keep our minds open and alert, our hearts compassionate, and our comments charitable. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The zoning commission of Palm Beach County has convened at 9:00 a.m. in the Vista Center, Ken Rogers Hearing Room, VC 1W 47, 2300 North Jog Road, West Palm Beach, 33411, to consider applications for official zoning map amendments, plan developments, conditional uses, development order amendments, type two variances, and other actions permitted by the Palm Beach County Unified Land Development Code and to hear the recommendations of staff on these matters. The commission takes final action regarding Class B conditional uses, subdivision variances, and type two variances, and issues advisory recommendations on accepting, rejecting, and modifying the recommendations of staff regarding other requests. The Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County will conduct a public hearing in the sixth floor, Jane Thompson Memorial Chambers, 301 North Olive Avenue, West Palm Beach, 33401, at 9:30 a.m. on Thursday, January 27th, to take final action on the applications listed below regarding official zoning map amendments, rezoning, Class A conditional uses, requested uses, planned developments, development order amendments, waiver requests, and administrative inquiries. Zoning hearings are quasi-judicial in nature and must be conducted to afford all parties' due process. The Board of County Commissioners has adopted procedures of conduct for quasi-judicial hearings to govern the conduct of such proceedings. The procedures include the following requirements. Any communications with commissioners which occurs outside the public hearing must be fully disclosed at the hearing. Applicants and persons attending the hearing may question commissioners regarding their disclosures. Such questions shall be limited solely to the disclosures made at the hearing or the written communications made a part of the record at the hearing. Any persons representing a group or organization must provide documentation that the person representing the group has the actual authority to do so regarding the matter before the commission. Any person who wishes to speak at the hearing will be sworn in and may be subject to cross-examination. The applicant and county staff may cross-examine witnesses. Any other persons attending the hearing may submit cross-examination questions, including follow-up questions, to the chair who will conduct the examination. The scope of cross-examination is limited to the facts alleged by the witness in relation to the application. Public comment is encouraged, and all relevant information should be presented to the commission in order that a fair and appropriate decision can be made. Do we have proof of publication?
Motion to receive and file.
Second. Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have a motion for adoption of minutes?
Motion to adopt the minutes.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Can we have the swearing-in by the county attorney, please?
Yes. Anyone wishing to speak or testify at today's hearing, please rise to be sworn in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Wonderful. Ms. Wendy, do we have amendments to the agenda?
Yes, we do. In front of you, we have an amendment which includes a request for item number five to be moved to the postponedment. On the consent agenda, we have a request to move Johns West PUD, item number three, to the regular agenda. Last night, after the amendment to the agenda was completed, we had a request for item number two to also be pulled from consent to the regular agenda. Item four, we have add delete, and then item number three, once it's pulled from consent, we also have that as add delete as well.
Okay.
Chair, may I make a motion to amend as adjourned?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo to amend the agenda, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
May I make a motion to adopt the agenda?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo to adopt the agenda, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Do we need to make the, okay. So, we're going to go ahead and go to move on to disclosures, and we're going to start to my left with Commissioner Pavlich.
No disclosures.
None.
None.
No disclosures.
I'm sorry, I spoke with the agents on the agenda, number three and number six.
None. And I spoke with, I spoke with, no disclosures from Commissioner Brumfield, and I spoke with the agent on item number three. Any conflicts or recusals, again, starting with my left with Commissioner Pavlich?
None.
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 Commissioner Brumfield?
None.
And I have none.
That'll bring us to page two of our agenda under postponements. Item number one, DOA 2021-00418 is the Sherbrooke Estates PUD. The request is to postpone to February 3, 2022.
Do I have a motion for postponement?
Motion to postpone to Thursday, February 3, 2022.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Do we have a motion for item number five to be postponed?
Motion postpone number five.
Second.
February 3, 2022.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Burke to postpone item number five to February 3, 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item number five is postponed?
So, we had pulled item two and three to the regular agenda, so the remaining items on consent is item number four. There is add delete, so we can have a motion. I don't believe there are any cards on item number four.
There are no cards on item number four. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Burke. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes.
Okay. That'll bring us to the regular agenda under items pulled from consent, and we will start with item number two, CA 2021-01156, which is the Palm Beach Dog Academy. The staff report is found on pages three through 20, conditions found on page eight through nine, and we can turn it over to the applicant to do a presentation.
Thank you, and good morning. Hope it's on, but I'll try to speak loudly. All right, if I remove this for the presentation? Thank you, sir. Good morning. Name's Kevin McGinley, representing Palm Beach Dog Academy today. And I think in the 40 years that I've been representing clients and projects in front of this commission, this is the first time I've ever volunteered to pull something off consent agenda. Usually just sit there, be quiet, and work my way out. I did so because of a new condition that's been added to, and as I understand it, going to be added to pet boarding facilities. This is the ninth time that a limited pet boarding facility has been brought in front of the commission. All other eight projects never had this condition on them. So this is the first time this commission will see this condition of approval that I wish to speak to today. I don't know, maybe staff will enlighten us as to the, as to generation of this condition, which I'll get into in just a minute, but I just want to describe what a limited pet boarding facility is, because in all the other applications I've been here before, we never had to make a presentation. So, a pet boarding, a limited pet boarding facility was something the county came up with through public input several years ago, and that was to afford the opportunity for small pet boarding facilities, that's seven or less of dogs that are not owned by the owner of the premises, and licensing through Animal Care and Control. What they did, rather than sending them all to kennels where they're in cages and, you know, in a commercial district, they said, you know, if you have a large enough piece of property, you should be able to house seven or fewer animals that don't belong to you. Now typically, in a one-acre-plus lot, you may have 10 of your own animals. I think Animal Care and Control, I was told, would be here today to verify some of these. So, you could have 10 of your own animals on your property, but if you want to watch somebody else's pets, you need to have conditional use approval and, from the Board of County Commissioners, with a recommendation from this commission, and a license from Animal Care and Control. And that's been fine. It's a nice compromise to have small mom-and-pop operations to do this, and we're not disputing that that's a good provision in the code. So making that clear, that a property owner, any property owner can have 10, doesn't need a license from Animal Care and Control, the dogs need to be licensed, and they need to carry that tag with them in case there's an inspection and all. But they don't need county commission approval, they don't need ACC approval. So this condition that I'd like to speak to today, if you would pull, I didn't bring any exhibits to put it on, but it's on page six under use limitations, and it reads this. "The county's inspection of the limited pet boarding facility shall be made without notice during normal business hours or at any reasonable time during daylight hours. The owner, employees, representatives, and its agents shall allow access to the premises by Palm Beach County Division of Animal Care and Control or code enforcement officers without notice during normal business hours or at any reasonable time during daylight hours for the purposes ensuring compliance with the Palm Beach County Animal Care and Control operational permit requirements and the limited pet boarding requirements." This condition doesn't state what triggers the ability to do inspections whenever the county feels like. If it is, in fact, on a verified complaint, that should be in this condition, so that you can track why people are showing up at premises and asking to get in and inspect the premises. I think that's reasonable. That'd be a verified complaint, and I'd like to see that language in here. Again, we're not opposed to this condition because it safeguards the animals, and it's a two-way street, but there has to be some kind of way to track this so that you don't get complaints from former employees who live two miles away, who were maybe fired for mishandling the animals or whatever they did. A neighbor six blocks away because they get a notice and they have an ax to grind with the property owner. It could be overstep on part of government that just goes in and, it's basically harassment could happen with this. So if there's a verified complaint, and you can track it, why it was there, there's no problem with going in and verifying whether or not there's abuse going on or something that's non-conforming to the conditions of approval, and I think that's reasonable. Secondly, it talks about getting onto the property to the limited pet boarding facility. Well, the limited pet boarding facility is part of the house. You're not allowed by code to have a separate barn or structure where the dogs reside that has to be attached into the house. So most of the ones that I've gone out to see are ones that convert their garage. They put air conditioning in, they keep it nice and cool and dark, they go out and they exercise the animals, and they go back in, and, you know, you can watch them for a week or two, three days when they're on vacation, when the owners are on vacation, things along those lines. But to say that you can get into the facility, I think it needs to be limited to the area of where the pets reside, not the whole house. You don't want code enforcement and Animal Care and Control walking around somebody's house, particularly if there's no verified complaint, and going through the living room, the dining room, baby's room, playrooms. It just stands to reason that it should be focused on the area in question. And with that, I have no other objections. It's just that this wording in this, which just came out recently, I think needs to be fine-tuned a little bit, and I've discussed this with the executive director of planning, zoning, and building, and I was assured that they would take a look at that, and I don't see it really here in the condition. And those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Ted?
No, sir, those are my comments.
Okay, great, thanks. Steph?
Okay, I'll go through the PowerPoint. So the item number three that's on our agenda today is for a limited pet boarding facility that's accessory to a single-family residence. The site is located...
Item number two.
Right.
Okay, the site is located on the south side of 76 Road North, approximately 246 feet east of Apache Boulevard. The request is a conditional use for the accessory use, which is the limited pet boarding facility. So as part of the approval, we have a preliminary site plan. We have approximately 2,200 square foot, single-family residence with detached garage, stables, stalls, sheds, and other accessory structures. There are two parking spaces minimum at the site, along with parking in their driveways. The use is approved as a single-family residence, and they have a proposed 630-square-foot outdoor rec area with a proposed fence that will have it 25 feet off of the western property line and southern property line, and that's required by code to have that particular fenced-in area. The outdoor recreation area also has to be supervised at all times. This map, though it's hard to read because of the lettering, that shows basically the distances from the approved limited pet boarding facilities in the area, so there are several with the most, the closest one, 2,800 feet. And this is the particular condition of approval, number three, that Kevin has raised with concern. Staff has added this condition along with the condition number four onto the approved site plan after discussion with our code enforcement, as well as Animal Care and Control. Staff is recommending approval. We received one comment and opposition, and I can turn it over to Dave Woleski, sorry, he's here from Animal Care and Control, to answer any questions on the proposed conditions.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
So I'm Dave Woleski. I'm the current assistant director there. I've been there about 27, almost 27 years. This condition is something that's pretty standard in all of our commercial permits. We anticipate some controversy with that moving forward. Obviously, this is a sensitive issue, as he pointed out. The way we do this is we inspect areas where the animals are. We don't go into houses unless that's where the animals are, and that's what part of the business would be for us to inspect. But other than that, as far as how frequent we do this, we do an annual inspection. You know, prior to the pandemic, we were doing about two a year. With the pandemic, we've held back quite a bit. We're doing just the one a year of the annual inspection. Then we are complaint-driven. If we do get complaints or we have concerns for the standards that the animals are being kept, the numbers of animals that are being kept, things like that that would bring us to the premises, then we do go to the premises. We do expect transparency, and we do want to see what's going on and make sure for consumer protection issues, animal safety issues, all of that, we want to make sure that the code is being followed.
Any questions about the condition?
No, and the inspections are all during daylight hours.
That's correct.
I had a question. You said that this is fairly new. When has it, how long has this been, this condition been in force?
This condition has been in our permit process for years and years.
Okay.
This is nothing new for us.
Okay.
So it's the first time that you have adopted, you know, chosen to include that with applications?
Yes.
Is there a reason?
Yeah, the reason this came about is working with the county attorney's office and with code enforcement on some of the projects. As was discussed by Kevin in his presentation, the use for pet boarding is supposed to be in the residence, the primary residence, and we're seeing uses come in with a combination of dog training, such as this one, it's an academy, it's a training facility, so they do a combination of training and boarding. And both this one and the other one that'll be on the Board of County Commissioners' agenda at the end of this month have accessory structures that we have a concern that they might do the boarding in the accessory structure. And in order to ensure that these crossover of training facilities and boarding facilities are meeting the limited pet boarding standards, it seemed appropriate to use the language that they're putting in the Animal Care and Control permit review that has been there, as David said, for years, in our conditions of approval for the use itself. And, you know, just to have that full disclosure and transparency that as these uses are approved, you know, this is what they require for Animal Care and Control, and this is what we would expect for the proposed pet boarding use.
Is it possible, then, to include some of the language of some of the questions that he had in that condition that state, like, you know, a couple of the points he brought up, I thought were very relevant as to how often is this going to take place? You were able to say that it takes place annually. As it reads, it doesn't say anything, and, you know, you don't know. Is it just going to come? Can they walk anywhere in the house? You were very specific in saying, no, we only go to those areas, and that was, you know, one of the points that he brought up.
Yeah, comments that Kevin said was complaint-driven, or obviously would be the annual inspection. He also brought up that the inspection would be limited to the animal
Yes.
housed area.
Yeah.
And I would include accessory structures as well, even though they're not allowed in the accessory structures. You know, that is something that...
I don't disagree with him.
So, I don't know how we would do that wording on the fly right now, or continue to have dialogue with David and Kevin.
So they're not allowed, they're not going into the house if, being it's an accessory structure that the animals are in? That's the only place they go, then?
They're not supposed to be in the accessory structure, and that's the issue. They're supposed to be in the garage, you know, in the house or part of the primary use. That's limited pet boarding, isn't for, if you're housing animals in an accessory structure in the back of your yard, that's a commercial kennel, and it's not allowed in the acreage. This was, this use came about because people wanted to take care of dogs inside their house, and I mean, if you remember, it was, I think, a woman who was taking care of little old dogs and inside their house, and it was kind of an accessory to the primary home, and it was to be inside the house. If you, if a property owner wants to have an accessory structure outside their house and have dog runs, that would be a commercial kennel use and not allowed in the zoning district. So that's where the distinguishing factor comes in. This is something associated with the homeowner, with their primary residence, or, you know, within their house or attached garage, not an accessory structure out in the back.
I got you.
But as far as the wording of the condition...
I suggest we revise the condition before it goes to the Board of County Commissioners, because what we don't want today is limit the authority that Animal Care and Control already has. We can work with Animal Care and Control's attorney and refine, come up with language that provides comfort to the applicant, that they're not going to be searching the bedrooms, but doesn't limit the authority that Animal Care and Control already has regarding this, the inspection process, because these facilities are licensed by Animal Care and Control, and they're subject to the Animal Care and Control permit, and this is really just to put them on notice that whether it's a code enforcement officer or an Animal Care and Control officer, that they're subject to inspection. It really wasn't adding a new requirement, it was just placing it in the zoning approval.
Yeah, I do think we need to have something so, you know, you've got an easy, like, template, because if something like this happens again, then we don't have to go through this. It's just a communication piece, and you know, you know, you'll be aware, other people will be aware, that this condition is now the norm.
I agree.
So, Bob, the way that it's worded here is basically just restating what's worded in the Animal Care and Control policy at this point? We're just restating that and adding it to our conditions? Is that correct?
No, it's not worded.
No, it's not.
It's very general.
Let me...
It's similar. I could tell you what our code reads.
Please.
It shall be a condition of the issuance of any permit that the division shall be allowed at any reasonable time to inspect without notice all domestic animals, all premises where animals are kept, all records pertaining to such animals, and all records pertaining to the business, and that's been in there for years.
When you say reasonable hours, they can't show up at night, I guess it was one of the points.
Well, even this wording here says during daylight hours, and the hours are restricted from 7:00 a.m. until 9:00 p.m.
Okay.
Of operation, so I would assume that.
We could, we could do verbatim with the Animal Care and Control language, I mean, if that was something that, you know, because it's...
Could do that.
Would it be cleaner if you just referred to the, to that...
Ordinance.
That ordinance or that...
I don't know if we could have a self-amending resolution.
Why not copy it, then?
Right, so if you just copy it and add the daylight hours
Yeah.
To his.
What would be wrong with that?
You know, typically don't refer to, from, I mean, with ordinances, we don't have supplementing ordinances that refer to another thing that could change. So if we say pursuant to, and then the Animal Care and Control ordinance, and then copy and paste verbatim, and then add the daylight hours, that seems reasonable.
That would work.
I'm all for less is more and not having more confusion, and one word gets offense on incorrectly, and you got confusion.
And then we got us saying one thing and them saying another thing.
Makes sense.
Mr. Banks, do you have any objections to that or any concerns?
I'd say we can take that as direction, and then we'll craft the language before it goes to the BCC.
Okay. So Wendy Elisa, should the motion be made with the consideration of the language being changed prior to the January 27th BCC hearing?
Correct. Condition number three on use limitations.
So how would you like to do that? Make a motion to recommend approval?
Recommend approval as amended for condition number three.
Okay, so why would I do that? A motion to recommend approval as modified, what, do you want to say modified? As modified, where was I? Approval to request subject to the conditions and approval as indicated in Exhibit C.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Scarborough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
A motion to recommend approval of a Class A...
Hang on there, hang on. Commissioner Brumfield, are you still there?
I think you lost him.
All opposed? Motion passes? Go ahead, Sam.
Okay, where was I here?
There's only one motion.
That's the only one motion.
That was it, there's only one motion to it. I was already heading for the next one, sorry.
Thank you very much, thank you, sir. Thank you for your time.
That's the results of no copy from the county.
Item number three?
Okay, item number three was also pulled from consent to the regular agenda. It's PDD 2021-01174 for Johns West PUD. The request before you is an official zoning map amendment from the rezoning from the AR zoning district to the Plan Unit Development District. The staff report is found on pages 21 through 58. Conditions found on page... The staff report is found on pages 21 through 58, conditions found on page 30 through 35, as well as our add delete. Staff is recommending approval of the request and I can turn it over to the agent. And I believe we do have some cards as well on it.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Wendy needs to give up the clicker. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Kevin Rattery, Vice President with GL Homes. The owner of the property is an affiliated entity of GL Homes by the name of Boca Raton Associates, Roman numeral 10, LLP. The matter before you is a straight rezoning to the PUD district for a 259.52 acre site. We're requesting approval for 679 single-family detached dwelling units. The property has an adopted land use plan designation of LR3. To be clear, we are not asking for any variances. We're not asking for a land use change. We are not asking for any workforce housing density bonus. There is only one request associated with this petition, and that is at the request of the family, the Johns family that sold us this property, to name the spine road after the patriarch of the family who started farming this property in Palm Beach County in the 1950s, E.F. Johns Parkway. So why did I pull it from consent? When we submitted the original petition, we showed two access points, and I'll show you graphics of all of this. I'm just framing the discussion. As part of the review by county, they requested, actually I should say required us to amend the PMP in the traffic report to show a third connection to the PUD through a road known as 95th Street. When I presented this proposal to the West Boca Community Council on September 26th, the council objected to the connection to 95th. So I am in a situation where the plan before you is showing the connection to 95th because that is the basis upon which we could get certified to go to public hearing and the deference to the West Boca Community Council, which has an objection to that 95th connection being made. And that's why I'm here. So let me start with the unit count because this becomes subject to a lot of people's consternation. This property is designated LR3. That is the adopted land use plan designation for the site. That allows 779 residential units at 10 trips per day is 7,790 trips. If we were to come in under the workforce housing density bonus program, there are two options, limited, which allows you up to 50% density bonus, and that would allow up to 1,168 homes and over 11,600, or 11,680 trips. If we came in for the 100% density bonus allowed under the workforce housing program, we would be allowed 1,558 residential units and you see the corresponding trip generation rate. The petition that's before you this morning is requesting 679 units. We are 100 units less than what the maximum PUD density of this project is and the corresponding 6,790 trips. So here's the property. And just for reference point, if everybody can see that red line, that is 95th Street. And for those of you that are familiar with this particular area of the county, which is west of Lyons Road, north of Glades Road, and east of State Road 7 in the Western Boca Raton area, the subject property is north of the intersection and Uptown Boca is at the southwest corner of that intersection. It is a mixed-use residential project that is principally constructed. A lot of the retail users are already there. There's a grocery store tenant that's doing their final build-out associated with opening that facility. And the concern of the West Boca Community Council was that that particular intersection at 95th and Glades has a lot of traffic associated with the Uptown Boca project and they would prefer the project not to have that vehicular connection. So this is the conceptual site plan, which is the basis of the PMP that's before you. We have two points of ingress and egress, Lyons Road and State Road 7. And it is typical when we have a PUD that has frontage on two or more collector roadways that we connect to at least two of those connection points. As I mentioned earlier, as part of the review process, the county asked us to make this connection to 95th Street so that residents could go directly south to Glades Road and then head east or west or through the intersection to get to the Uptown Boca project. Again, this is the PMP that that's based on. As you can see from the PMP, we are showing that connection to 95th. This is the conceptual site plan from the original submittal. The original submittal showed only the access to Lyons Road and to State Road 7, but did not have the connection to 95th right here. So obviously, we had to do some redesign of the plan to accommodate that point of connection. And this was the PMP, that was the basis of that submittal, again, with the connection at Lyons Road and the connection at State Road 7. Again, the access points for the project being Lyons Road and State Road 7. Now with regard to State Road 7, the county has requested a civic site right there. Now, just to remind everybody of the code requirement, when a residential PUD comes in, we are required to provide 2% of our gross developable area to the county as a potential civic site. The county will send out to the county departments a notice that the PUD is coming in and that there will be a civic site obligation of this PUD. In this particular case, it's 5.19 acres, it's the 2%. And the county departments then opine back to the Department of, you know, Prem, Property and Real Estate Management, whether or not they need a civic site in this geographic location. If they confirm they do, then the county sets up the conditions of approval associated with the conveyance of the civic site. The county departments responded back that of the 5.19, fire rescue needs three acres for a future fire rescue station. It is not a station that is funded, but it is something that's on the department's radar as to needing in the future. And the primary geographic area for service is south of this particular PUD. So when we originally submitted, we were requesting a directional left-in off State Road 7 into the project, but not a full median opening because it did not meet the spatial separation requirements for a full median opening. The county has asked us and we have participated with them in going back to DOT and requesting that DOT actually permit the State Road 7 entry as a full median opening and has conditioned the project to provide for signalization in the event that DOT will permit signalization. Obviously, the county's desire not only to have the trips associated with this project be able to take a left out to go south on State Road 7, but also for fire rescue purposes to have the future fire site to be able to take that left out. This is just a graphic depiction of the civic pod associated with where it's located. Again, we put it on the roadway frontage, the gates to the community. I don't see any red anymore. Okay, we see that little circle on it. The gates to the community are beyond that circle, so obviously the civic site can be accessed before you get to the gates of the community. Again, it's 679 lots, 119 single-family, 560 lot line. The PUD complies with the open space requirement. We are exceeding the recreation requirement of the county code relative to the acreage and size. And for those of you that are familiar with GL Homes, obviously, we spend a considerable amount of time and effort associated with our recreation amenities, inclusive of our newer communities having restaurant options, whether they be limited options for lunchtime service while you're at the pool or some of our developments have full-service restaurants that provide indoor dining for both lunch and evening hours. So when you talk about some of the traffic associated with these projects, obviously, having that type of restaurant option is something that provides an amenity to the residents as well as the amenities within the facilities themselves, inclusive of the gym areas that people use associated with living in the community. So here's what it really means in terms of the traffic distribution. On the left, you see the 95th, there it is, you see the 95th access, and then you see without the 95th access on the right side. And this is 95th right here where my cursor is. So what's happening with the 95th connection is 20% of the traffic is going out to Lyons Road and heading south. 20% is going out to State Road 7 and heading south. And 25% of that total community traffic is now using 95th. Without that connection, you have 35% of the traffic heading east to Lyons Road and you have 30% of the traffic heading west to Lyons Road. Again, just to show the total number of trips, it's 6,790 gross trips, 100 units less than what the total permissible density is of the project. And this is just a copy of the adopted land use plan map that shows the property with an adopted LR3 designation. So workforce housing, somebody's going to ask me about workforce housing and so I'm just going to go ahead and answer the question if I could. In 2019, Palm Beach County did a pretty major restructuring of the workforce housing program. And as part of that restructuring industry, and when I say industry, I mean market rate builders like GL Homes and not-for-profit builders of workforce housing and for-profit builders of workforce housing worked together cooperatively to create a additional concept relative to how the workforce housing obligation would be met in these projects. In code today, you have four options. You can build the units onsite, you can build the units offsite, you can pay the county an in-lieu fee, and then the fourth, which was the new option that was crafted with industry working together, is affectionately referred to as the exchange. And the exchange is what most people commonly think of when they say gap financing. What it basically does is allow a market rate builder to work with a workforce builder whereby the market builder pays the obligation for the workforce unit directly to the workforce builder. The workforce builder has to go through a permitting process with Palm Beach County as to the site, the location, what type of units they're going to do, what their pricing range is. And the county approves that and then we become the gap financing. So instead of paying the county the money and it go to the county, it goes directly to a builder of a project that has a project going forward. Why is that important? It's important because the unit gets built. It's important because those are real developers doing a real project that are going through a permitting process with Palm Beach County. Some of you were on this board when we brought forth the Boca Municipal Project, the old Boca Raton Golf Course site. That project had 56 workforce housing obligations. We have already done partnerships with two exchange builders that were approved through Palm Beach County and those units are either under construction and one of them's closing on the site in the next couple of weeks and he's getting ready to move forward with his project. Again, the units get built. So that's what industry was trying to work through, was figure out a way to get these units built. So that's my presentation. I, you know, I do have Kyle Duncan here, who's a transportation engineer with Simmons and White, in case there's more specific questions relative to the 95th connection, but in deference to the West Boca Community Council, I didn't feel it was appropriate to keep this item on consent when I know that they're going to have some concerns regarding that connection. So that's why we pulled it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Wendy, do we have a staff presentation?
Yes, we can turn it to Imen Hadad for her presentation by staff.
Here I go. I'm stealing it now.
Thank you, Kevin, for that thorough presentation. Staff, commissioners, I'll go ahead and make this as quick as I can but touch on the most important points that staff did review when reviewing this application as far as zoning goes. The general location of the project is east of State Road 7, approximately a quarter of a mile north of Glades Road. A total of 259.52 acres. The application is a request for 679 units within seven pods. One of the pods is a single-family detached. The other ones are detached zero lot line units. There is a 7.17 acres recreation pod that he mentioned earlier that they'll be following conditions for. And there is a 0.5 acres preserve area. As you can see, the master plan shows where the pods are. The three access points are shown on the, the master plan. There was on the add delete some ownership information that we, that staff included in the add delete as the ownership changed. Staff is recommending approval. We did review all the exemplary standards in code, all the, the compatibility issues that code addresses. Staff finds that the request meets all the standards of code and therefore we are recommending conditions pursuant to the conditions of approval in Exhibit C. I will be happy to answer any questions and with that, I conclude my presentation. Thank you.
We've concluded.
Excellent.
Do you want to turn it to public comments?
We do have one public comment. When you come to the podium, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. You will have three minutes to speak.
Robert Zouler?
Zouler.
Zouler, I'm sorry. Trying to read that right.
Can I remove my mask?
Yes.
I'll keep this relatively short. As you know, my name's Bob Zouler. I live at 19975 Villa Lante Place. Our property faces directly on the north side of this proposed development. As it is now, it is beautiful farmland. And one of the small pleasures in life that my wife and I enjoy is in the morning sharing coffee and looking out on this beautiful landscape and in the evening, sharing dinner and watching the sun set. Obviously, we call this our little corner of paradise. And as I prepared to speak here, reminded me the old Joni Mitchell song, and I'll spare you, I won't sing it. But they paved paradise and they put up a parking lot with a pink hotel, a boutique, and a swinging hotspot. They took all the trees and they put them in a tree museum and they charged the people a buck and a half to see them. Don't it always seem to go, you don't know what you've got till it's gone? And that's exactly what's happening here. And one of the many ironies of this is that the people that are coming down here to move into these homes, they're trying to escape exactly what we're turning this into. We're turning this into an urban mess because this development isn't the only development. This is part of a GNL land grab, okay? And it's going to change this community forever. And like the song says, you don't know what you've got until it's gone. I could go on, but I would say just what we need is more zero lot homes in South Florida. But regardless of what they put up here on the screen, I live in this area. State Route 7, Lyons Road, and Glades Road is already a hot mess. It was never, this infrastructure was never, never intended to handle this level of development. So I thank you for your time, but again, in the words of the song, you don't, it don't always seem to go. You don't know what you've got till it's gone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'll open it up to questions on the commissions, starting with Commissioner Scarborough. This is your district, I assume, I believe?
It is. And I will say that Mr. Rattery is correct. The West Boca Community Council did meet with GL Homes several times regarding this development. They, they are in support of the development minus the 95th Avenue exit. They've discussed it for months now that no other community has three entrances or three exits, much less through, I know that they removed the Hampton Drive exit. That was good. But the third entrance onto 95th is what the council's opposed for. So for that reason, I won't support it unless the 95th Avenue entrance is removed.
I have a question for staff. This requirement for 95th, that was, that came from the county, correct?
Correct.
Was from Palm Beach County?
Correct.
Okay.
Was the county that asked for that?
Yeah, we actually requested that and the reason for that is, I mean, the more collection points you have, the better trip distribution will be in the area networks, roadway networks. So that will not, you know, overburden a single point of So that will not, you know, overburden a single point of access. And the other reason is, there is a high school on Lyons Road, just very close to their access point on Lyons Road. So there is already an problem, you know, traffic problem due to that school, especially in the morning.
Is the school north or south of the access point on Lyons Road?
Very close, just north.
Just north.
To that access point on Lyons Road for this project. So there is already that problem from the school traffic in the morning. So we wanted to shift some of that traffic to some other points. So 95th Avenue was another possible location where they can have that access point. So that's the reason we wanted that additional access point. Otherwise, in, for TPS-wise, traffic performance standard-wise, it doesn't make any difference whether they have two access points or one access.
What is the current size of 95th?
Yeah, that's where I was.
It's just a two-lane, you know, small road.
How wide?
It's an 80-foot right-of-way.
It's an 80-foot right-of-way? 80 feet per two-lane road?
Correct, but the roadway itself is maybe 20 feet or something, but the right-of-way is 80 feet.
Yeah, but doesn't that dump onto Glades? So you got a two-lane road with putting all that, the small 80-foot, I didn't mean to interrupt our chairman, but, and putting too much pressure onto Glades with a small access road like that?
It will, it will have the capacity as a two-lane road to handle that additional traffic.
What's a signalized?
It's a signalized.
Intersection, correct?
Correct.
And it's just to the east of that large development, the shopping area?
It's at the northeast corner of that shopping center at the south of Glades Road, that Boca, whatever that is called.
So the entrance is on 7, the entrance and exit, that, at this moment, is not a south-facing entrance, right? Because the medium doesn't go, it's not a complete medium, it's only a turn-in?
Correct.
They have to come back to, with the fire station to widen that median? Yeah, that, that won't be a signalized entrance either, because it's so close to the other signal already, yes?
We have actually requested a single priority for that location, for that access on State Route 7, if DOT agrees to, you know, making that access as a full median. Right now, the way it is proposed, it's only a directional median opening. So you can make northbound right in, north, northbound right out, and then southbound left in only. You cannot make a left turn out from that access point.
So without the 95th, if that doesn't happen, without the 95th entrance and exit, the only way south is off of Lyons Road?
Yeah, you can, you can go south, but you have to go first north on State Route 7, then make a U-turn at Kimberly. That will be like a one-mile detour, half-mile, go north, and then come back half-mile south to go south.
I think it, myself, I think it relieves a lot of issues traffic-wise, it gives them more options. I agree with the county on this proposal. I could agree with the county. My only problem with that is the road's so narrow.
Is there a, in the, in Exhibit C, and I apologize, I'm just trying to look it over, is there a requirement to build out the road to the full 80 feet, to widen it from two lanes of a 20-foot pavement to?
Four lanes.
Four lanes? Because you've got the library there at the corner, too, and that's going to stack up coming outwards at the light. How are they going to access the library? So unless we add some pavement or add some lanes to allow that to disperse as they come towards the area of the light at Glades Road, you're going to have stacking issues coming in if they want to access the library as well as coming out, yes?
Right. If that 95th Avenue access happens, then there will be some improvements required at that intersection, including the southbound left turn, extension of the southbound left turn lane.
Are those being?
That is already in the condition.
Are they provided by the developer?
I'm sorry, we got two different questions.
I'm sorry.
Real quick, hang on, Commissioner Kelly and Commissioner Beatty?
Well, I think we had the same question. If, are they there now? And if not, is the developer going to pay to improve it?
Correct.
Is that part of the conditions?
The condition is already in the development order.
Conditions in here?
And if any access happens.
Let me interfere with that, interfere. You were saying, correct. His question was very clear. Is the developer already agreed to put the dollars and cents up to participate in doing that, to widening that road?
Responsible by GL Homes or?
Yeah, actually, I probably should answer that question, so, and I didn't bring it up in my presentations, so my apologies. We drafted the conditions both ways. If the commission approves this without 95th, these connections apply. If the commission approves it with 95th, these conditions apply. The answer to the question is, the intersection improvements that Quasi mentioned are a requirement of the developer to fund and pay for associated with the approval of the project.
So to be clear, they're, they're going to put up the money to widen that road?
The intersection.
And that, and that amount of money is going to widen the roads? In other words, is there a set amount of money for this?
There's two, there's two separate things. Let me read the specific condition of approval. If the requirement is for 95th connection, it reads, extend the north approach left turn lane on 95th Avenue. So you're from the north heading south at Glades Road to 375 feet plus 50-foot taper or as approved. So the specific improvement required is an intersection improvement to extend the turn lane, because now you're adding cars that are coming to that intersection. We would speculate that a lot of those cars would be turning east, and there needed to be additional stacking for that turn lane.
Is there a definition to what triggers this?
The approval of 95th on the plan or not on the plan. If the approval of the commission is to approve it with 95th connection, this condition applies, it kicks in, and we have to do that turn lane improvement.
So if 95th goes in there, you have to put that in?
That is correct, sir.
And then, then that'll cure the southbound scenario?
Cure is a relative term.
Wow.
It allows for additional stacking for the cars that are coming out of the new project in addition to the cars that are already going on that roadway, because there's residential communities that access the road, plus the library, plus the furniture stores that are there at the corner. It allows cars additional stacking to be able to make that left turning movement. But in terms of the volume of cars at that intersection, it's actually increasing the volume of cars that are getting to that particular intersection, because now 25% of that traffic distribution from that project, which before was going out to Lyons and State Road 7, now is going south on 95th.
There's going to be a lot of pressure on that 95th. Well, you could, you're going to have that pressure, some of it anyway. If I'm going to, if I'm coming out of Lyons Road and I'm going to west, I'm going through that intersection anyway. Right. So maybe not all of it's going that way, but you're still going to have people there from Lyons Road, so.
I have one question. So GL Homes is required to fund the building of that turn lane?
Yes.
Yes, as a condition of approval.
And does, right, it's in the conditions of approval.
And why?
So they fund it, so when does the road get widened? Does that money, is that money guaranteed to widen 95th Avenue? Or is that going into a general fund and the county deciding where that money is spent?
Or has to put up a percentage of it?
Right.
So the improvement itself has to be done by GL. The timing of that needs to be worked out with engineering as to when they want it, because generally, we start from the east and move west for Lyons Road, so we'll need to phase in that improvement. So when the connection is physically there for you to use the road, that the improvement be there.
Then we need a commitment from the county to know when that's going to get triggered. Is it going to come after the fact or during the fact?
I think traffic and land development will look into that, but typically, the, prior to the issuance of any onsite building permits, they're required to get a right-of-way permit for the roadway improvements, and prior to any onsite COs, they would have to have that, that infrastructure built.
Any COs?
Typically residential units, for any, for any of the housing.
Well, that's what I mean, for any of the housing COs, they would have to have completed the.
And one other thing we have to, I'm going to take a second look at, 95th Avenue itself is within an 80-foot right-of-way, 24 feet of pavement, so for the non-planned collector standards, two 12-foot lanes within an 80-foot section. So the roadway itself, when we looked at it previously, already had met that standard, so I didn't have a specific condition for them to widen the entire road from Glades to their connection. But now that it's coming up, I'm just gonna, we'll probably work with GL and traffic and make sure that everything is in order. The timing is correct.
I think what Sherry's saying, Mark's saying, John's saying, we're all saying, saying, we hear the good faith that you all are talking about. My concern is what, what Sherry's and it sounds like some other commissioners are, that it doesn't happen, it goes into some kind of fund, and the county has a right to maneuver those monies, and it's had, this doesn't happen for years to come. And that, and that's the kind, and as Mark just said, I mean, you're going to have pressure no matter what you do. We certainly don't want it to be at the start.
Commissioner Kelly, and I think what you're referring to is like some type of prop share payment, where the prop share payment goes, this, this is not that type of condition. This is a site.
Well, I just want to make sure it's not.
It's a site-specific condition that requires the improvement to be done. We just have to work through the timing, because obviously, if it's first building permit, we haven't even built the spine road to get to 95th, and for 95th to make that connection down, so there's nothing there for it to connect to. So we would want to phase that to when we actually physically make that 95th.
But my, I think our concern is that that phasing is done in a rapid manner, not somewhere at the end of the project or down the road.
I understand.
But that's what happens continuously.
Scott, can I ask for clarification from staff real quick? You said that the road improvements have to be completed prior to a CO being issued, so before any resident can move into that community, before that road can be, before any resident moves into the community, that road has to be completed and expanded to the conditions of approval, yes?
Yes, Condition 9, the trigger, says the construction shall be completed prior to the issuance of the first certificate of occupancy.
Does that include the spine road all the way out to State Road 7?
No. No, the spine road is separate. That'll be built in phases with the onsite under a land development permit. So these improvements are done under right-of-way permits, either through the state or through the county, but the onsite roadway itself, we don't typically condition that to be built at certain times, because, you know, it's providing access to the residences as they go in and construct the development. So they wouldn't even, without a road, they wouldn't even get a CO. They couldn't get to their house.
Can I ask?
What about the civic pod? Let's assume the county, you know, I don't know how long their plan on phasing this through, is it, you know, a year that sells out, you're on it, it's done? Is it something happened, do we explode, and now it's five years dragging and it doesn't get connected and they need a fire station?
So.
That's why I question why, why the entire infrastructure, the main infrastructure is not going in in the beginning?
So the connection to State Road 7 and the State Road 7 roadway improvements are required to be done prior to a certain CO. That was based, we discussed with Prem, I'm sorry?
So many homes, is that what we're news?
Correct. It'd be like the 50%, I believe is what we agreed to for those connections, you know, on the west side. But they'll be developing from the east side to the west side, you know, in phases as they go.
So it could be two, three years, in essence, if you're going from east to west?
Well, if the condition says prior to first CO, we have to do the 95th improvements, we have to do the improvements before our first CO, there won't be any units accessing it, because we won't have built 95th to it to make that connection, but once that 95th connection is done, which again, we just logically go as we build, building the spine road from east to west, we would make that connection. That's why I was suggesting we just work with engineering to come up with. I have no problem physically doing the improvement upfront, but I do have a problem if we're building 95th through our community before we even have a spine road to get to it so that people could access it, to build it. So all I'm asking for is let us work with engineering to come up with a logical time for when that 95th connection needs to be made. But Mr. Kelly, and I'm happy to do the improvement on 95th itself upfront, so that it's waiting for that connection to be made.
You understand our concern here.
I certainly do.
Because this goes on and on all the time. We get all these false promises, and there's one excuse from either the developer or the county of why it never really happened.
I understand. I understand.
That's the concern.
I have a, I have a question if I could. I know we're kind of going down a path with 95th, but early on, I had a question, so I just, for my understanding, does it pass traffic without 95th?
Yeah, it does have, it does have access from small residential development and to commercial parcels.
Okay, well, what I was saying is if they, just, because I agree that for 679 homes, three access, it does seem a little extraordinary, but I understand we have issues with Glades and Lyons and State Road 7. So my question is, if 95th was not in play and you just had the spine road, does the development meet traffic?
It meets traffic standards either way.
Okay.
With just two access or three access.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there is no difference.
Can I just ask, what is the timeline, approximate timeline of completion of the development? So once you guys start, you know, break ground, what is your approximate timeline?
I can't answer that this morning, because we are starting with our Boca Municipal Project, which is on the east side of Lyons Road first. We have not made a business decision as to when we're going to bring this community online.
Okay.
So I just don't have a timeframe to commit to you this morning of when we're going to start. But I guess the good news is, when we start, we usually finish pretty quick, because our sales are, are very robust, and so we generally get through these projects pretty quick.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions from the commission? Do I have a motion?
A motion to recommend approval, hold on, I'm going to get the right one. A motion to recommend approval of a rezoning from Maga Culture Residential to Planned Unit Development District, subject to the conditions of approval as indicated in Exhibit C. It's with the 95th connection, correct? With the 95th connection, yes. Second.
As amended.
As amended. Second.
Mr. Chair, do you mind if I clarify, just so I understand what the vote was? Is that to have 95th built through our community prior to the first CO, or is that to build the improvements on 95th prior to the first CO, and then we'll work with engineering to time when 95th in our community?
I think we need better clarification on that.
Okay, I mean, if you want, if you want a specific number, I mean, since we're doing 339 out to State Road 7, I would probably say, let's take a quarter of the residential units of the project, and when a quarter of the residential units have the building permits, we have to.
Well, that's 200 and some units that you want to put online before you've done that. I don't think that's.
Building permits, not COs.
Yeah, not COs.
The CO condition still stands.
Still, still, has precedence, the first CO, correct?
That's, if that's your vote, I.
Well, I'm, I'm asking staff, their definition.
I, I, I think we should look at it from a traffic standpoint and make sure that, you know, we're, if Lyons Road access is the only access point while these houses are being built, there should be some CO that we can identify that would ensure that the Lyons access point isn't exceeding what our assumptions were. You know, I, I don't know what that CO is of, that number off the top of my head, but it's something we can definitely look at and, yeah, go from there. And you're talking about the bridge, the connection over the L44.
Right.
To their onsite, that shall be built prior to whatever, 200 CO, 150th CO, whatever we come up with. Maybe somewhere between the 339 and the first, so what, 170th?
Yeah, something that, something smaller like that.
Sam, if I may make, make a recommendation, rather than going with a number, you can amend your motion to say that prior to the connection being made, that the improvements to 95th and Glades is completed. So that way, we're not relying on a number, just, it has to be ready before they actually make the connection.
And maybe, or maybe both.
But he's saying no.
Or maybe both, like prior to the connection or a CO, whichever happens first. Because that way, we ensure, because if they never do the connection, then, you know, we have nowhere to track it or monitor it.
So then, so then we modify it to say, subject to the, subject to either the connection or the CO.
Whichever shall first.
Whichever appears first. Is that understood? I mean, we're not.
It was the number one.
We're saying in three or four words, but I mean, Cafferty.
I just want to make sure I understand the number. Is it 170th, just so we have a, a number?
Yeah.
Well, I think we're trying to say it's either or, whichever occurs first.
Well, the definition of that is, it's going to be the first CO, because the first CO is going to occur much.
Okay, so then there's your answer.
That, we're, we're building a road that's not connecting to anything.
Do you understand our concerns here? This, this happens so many times, and what Sherry's brought up so many times, the pressure on Glades Road is enormous, and no matter what we. Glades Road is enormous and no matter what we do, it's never, we're not going to make that right, but we certainly don't want to contribute to make it any worse. And my concern is it doesn't happen, and as John's saying too, in a timely manner. So we want to make sure that it happens timely. So if it stays empty for a little bit, okay, it's better not getting done.
And, and all I'm suggesting-
Same money, except you do it sooner, it'll be cheaper, but inflation is going, at the rate it's going.
It's just-
Your administration.
To get to the road, you have to then build the spine road to make that connection. And so all I'm suggesting is that usually-
Yes, we have to get to the spine road real quick too. Yes, Wendy?
If I could, you know, I think what we're talking about, it has to do with engineering condition nine, which we have amended on our add delete. And on the add delete, it talks about if 95th doesn't get built and it also talks about if it does get built with some mechanisms in there and continues on to talk about the first CO. So I think this is the condition of approval that the applicant and staff need to work on between now and BCC to get that timing that you guys are recommending. So-
But you understand what we're trying to say here though, right?
Yeah, we have, we have-
No drag.
Yeah, so I think number nine is what we need to work with, so we make sure that we have the appropriate CO, that it's early. If you don't want the first CO, then we work on that appropriate number between now and BCC, if that's okay.
I don't want to make it difficult. I mean, it's confusing because nine's already fairly long and it's on the add delete and there's different scenarios for whether the connection happens or not. So I just want me to be clear, when we're crafting this condition, there's the intersection improvements that's currently tied to the first CO. You want that to remain at the first CO.
At the first CO.
The next step is the, the actual roadway, 95th itself and the connection, the bridge to the site, that needs to be done in a timely manner, not way down the road.
Well, yeah, and that's what we're trying to say because you could build a road that go nowhere, but if you don't put that connection in, it's not going to happen. So there's got to be some kind of tie-in between the road and the tie-in.
Right. So instead of maybe, maybe I'll wish add a new condition between now and then, instead of modifying nine even more because it's already been modified a lot, specifying that, and we would say, we would have a CO that's low, lower than, you know, 339 or not even half that, something that I can work with traffic, 25th percent, like 25% of the total COs, that would be about 170 and/or the connection from the spine, or when the spine road gets built, whichever happens first, which I'm sure-
Whichever happens first.
Whichever happens first, not later.
We want to make sure we keep enough pressure on getting the spine road connect, completed as well, because that's going to take longer.
Because you're, you're going to, you're going to complete the spine road as you move through the property, not, hey, all the infrastructure is in, so you're doing it, moving east to west, so phase one doesn't get us to the 95 connector off of the spine road, is that correct?
That's correct, but what Scott's referring to is that, okay, let's figure out a timing mechanism that says, okay, it's your 170th. Not only do, you know, you've already had to do the improvement at the intersection because that's first CO, you've now had to build that spine road connection to 95th and built 95th down to make the physical connection to the existing roadway so that that's done and it's when the spine road connects to 95th or 170th, whichever first occurs.
Can I throw another wrench in this?
Sure.
Sorry about the last one, but I'm just concerned about the spine being done. So why don't we, is there a way we could say they're both to start simultaneously? Is there any objection to that? Because if they're started, that means they're permanent, that means they're going to happen.
No, I, I think- What I would respectfully suggest is we adopt some of these conditions, but I'd like our building department with our engineering and traffic department to meet with them to see what their schedule is because it doesn't really make sense to approve one thing on one side of the project when they can't actually get to the other side. So, but I need to kind of see where those, where that gets us. So I'd like to meet with them between now and then and BCC to kind of finalize the numbers, what really makes sense in the real world, because-
But Ramsey, it should be something that-
Well, you're going to hit a point.
Both going and-
Well, you're going to hit a point at Lyons Road.
They want to keep going as well, so I would like a mechanism that doesn't impede them and gets them in and out so that residents, it's done and over with the project as a whole in a timely manner. So the only way we can do that is to sit down with their guys and our guys are people that are out in the field all the time and figure out a mechanism that makes sense that's within these parameters. Right now, we don't know what that is because we haven't sat down with their engineers, their construction folks and their method of construction, so I don't know that now. But I get, I think in essence, we understand exactly what we're saying. I think we're all in the same boat, it's just trying to put numbers down.
Okay, okay, well, then you got it.
So I don't know how to put that on paper, but-
I don't either, so how do we, how, what do we do?
Well, aren't you going to, aren't you going to hit a point at Lyons Road where you would exceed the amount of trips going out of that access where you're forced to have another connection, be it State Road 7 or 95th? I mean, you couldn't dump, you couldn't have one access through there and dump all that traffic on Lyons, right?
Right, and I don't know-
So at some point, traffic may tell us that. What's that magic number to where you're forced to put the 95 access, or 95th?
Right.
Connector in.
And I don't know, there's a lot of moving parts with utilities, et cetera. I don't know where that goes yet, so that's why I'd like to sit down-
I'll leave it up to you guys.
And get that sorted out to make, you know, make sense.
Let them determine what it is, but they understand, everybody understands what we're trying to achieve, so. What do we do with the motion?
So, so we have a motion on the table with a second. Do we need to withdraw that motion and make a new one at this point to clarify?
Or do we add to it?
Or what would staff prefer to make this a little bit more understandable?
Or add to whatever you want.
I think, you know, we'll discuss and, you know, finalize between now and BCC.
So leave it like it is?
The minutia of it.
Yeah, so your motion is to approve the rezoning for the, from the AR district to the Planned Unit Development, subject to the conditions of approval as amended and discussed herein.
Including the 95th option, 25th connection option.
Sam, are you, Sam, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
As your motion?
Yeah.
Do you still second Commissioner?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed, opposed simply because of 95th and the traffic.
Understanding.
I'm opposed as well.
Okay. Thank you all, happy new year.
Thank you. So the motion passes seven to two.
What, they may make a motion adjourned?
No, sir, no, there is not. I'll leave that to item number six, please.
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Page five of the agenda, item number six is ZV 2021-01-067, maximum services. The request before the board is a type two variance that includes an elimination of a portion of an incompatibility buffer as well as a reduction in the rear setback for structures. The staff report is found on page 143 through 164. Conditions of approval are found on pages 148 through 150. Staff is recommending approval, or has a split recommendation, so we are recommending approval of the elimination of the portion of the incompatible buffer, however, we are recommending denial of the request to reduce the rear setback. So I'll turn it over to the applicant to do a presentation.
Mr. Bradley, the mic is yours.
Good morning zoning commissioners and happy new year to everyone. My name is Bradley Miller with Urban Design Studio here representing the applicant for, I'm going to emphasize, a variance application, type two variance application for maximum services. This is a site that's out in the ag reserve. The use of the property, which has been that way for 15 some years, is a nursery and landscape service business. To give, I know you've heard about the landscape service business scenario going through the county, it's been going on for four or five years now where code enforcement came in and enforced that landscape service, the use of landscape service use is a, an industrial or a commercial use. And we went through several years of writing, drafting code and regulations for the landscape services use, which allows that use to be on this property. It's gone to the Board of County Commissioners, so today is not a, an application relative to the use. In fact, it's, it's, that use is established and allowed by the BCC, by the code. The application is for a type two variance and I woke up with the thought this morning that this is really a, a variance of considering technicality versus reasonable reality. And I think hopefully that will make some sense as I, as I move forward here. I went through a lot of that description that's on the screen there, I'm not going to go repeat it, but it's gone for my client who's here, Todd Grande, has been involved from day one of about four or five years now of this process and the, the process that is required by code for these uses to be established is to go through a staff review and approval process for a final site plan. We submitted that site plan last year and through the review process, it was determined that we needed to get these two variances. The first variance is to eliminate a portion of the planting for a buffer along this west property line. The property is, is surrounded really by agricultural uses to the north, to the east, to the south is an important one, to the south is an existing tree farm, it's part of a preserve parcel of an ag reserve, it's got restrictive covenants on it and a conservation easement on it, so it's, it's going to be either agricultural or some form of conservation. The property to the west is, has assortment of uses there, there's a single family home there, there's a cell tower on the site, they have some livestock, so it's a little bit of, of a potpourri of uses on that property. It does not have ag exemptions on it and so because of that, we have to provide a buffer along that west property line. So the area that's indicated in green is the buffer that we're required to put in. The area in orange crosses a lake, that blue line, squiggly line is, is an existing lake or pond that branches across about four or five different properties out there, it's been there for many, many years. And so here, here's the technicality versus the reality is that the requirement is that we plant trees in this buffer. It's a little hard to plant trees in a lake. And so because of that, that's our first variance to eliminate that portion that's, that's in orange. There's lake and then there's an island out there that's in the middle, so it's just a portion of it that's, that's a lake area that, that we wouldn't be able to get to, to plant the trees and then the island remains the same that already has vegetation in it. So for, in some regards, the buffer's already there. And staff is in full support of that, they're, they have acknowledged that in their staff report and Wendy in her, in her introduction. The second variance pertains to a building that's down there on the southern property line. It's a, a storage building that was constructed under the ag exemptions, that's allowed as a, under agricultural uses. And when you have that ag exemption, you're not required to comply with zoning regulations such as setbacks or have building permits. And that's, that's how it was constructed. Now that it's, now we've gone through this code revision and we want to use that building to use it for storage, if it's going to be used for any component of landscape service, if we have a bag of fertilizer in there that might be perceived to be used for landscape service as opposed to being used onsite for the wholesale nursery is considered landscape service. Landscape service is not ag exempted. So therefore, the building technically, again, has to comply with the setbacks. The setback on that south property line is 100 feet and we have 57.6, six feet. So that's the other variance that, that we're requesting and that's the part that, that staff is objecting to. When we initially submitted this, we were also proposing that we would add another building right next to that one. And as of, as of today, I'm committing that we're not going to do that. So the variance that's before you here today is only going to apply to the one existing building that, that's onsite, we're acquiescing to the new building that would be proposed. My initial proposal was to say, look, if, if we can build that, if we want to expand, we can apply it, apply that same 57-foot setback. And I, I think that was causing some consternation with, with staff and so we're willing to, to give that one up. This is the, the site plan that is part of the, that's the site plan that we submitted, that's what triggered this, this variance application. You can see the area in green is what has to be the nursery area by these new regulations. 70% of the site has to be a nursery plant, planting area. The area in, in white is considered the landscape service area, includes the access road in, there's a little office area up there, north of the lake, and then most of it is in the southern half of the, of the property of the landscape service part of it. So with all these approvals, then our, my client will have to go through a permit process to get all this permitted and actually implement it, so it really will change the, the appearance of the site primarily with more vegetation. He's, he's not done any of that because it's been a four or five-year process to get through this, not knowing whether he was going to be allowed to do it or not, so, but he is more than ready to, to get it started. So as I mentioned, that, the, the second building, the darker brown one, that one, we're taking off the table as of this morning, the second variance would only apply to the existing building. These are the seven standards that are in your code that you're really making your decision on today. Again, I'm going to bring up, it's not a use issue, it's a variance issue. These are the seven standards that apply to both variances. In, in the first variance, variance V1, which is for the buffer on the west side, staff is in full support of, of that being eliminated for that area, the, the orange area on the site. So I'm not going to, to go through that, staff report covers it and they're saying yes to all the seven criteria. So I'll focus on the, the rear setback variance, the, the second variance where staff is objecting to it. This is a picture of the storage shed, it's in the range of like 15 feet in, in height. The, the middle photograph with the 57.6 is looking to the east, so that's the buffer that's on the east side of the property. And then the one on the very right side is showing the existing buffer that's on the south side of the property. It's already buffered on that side and again, the property to the south of us is a preserve parcel of an ag reserve that's very restricted to either agricultural or, or conservation type uses through, through their restriction. This shows, gives, gives the background again, it was constructed using the ag exemption criteria for agricultural uses to build the building. It, it's been there, it's being used for the same thing. Here's where it comes down to splitting hairs. Under a wholesale nursery, that's allowed to stay there and quite frankly, that building is going to stay there one way or another, you guys really get to determine how it gets used. If, if we have fertilizer in there that goes to the wholesale nursery, it's fine that way. If we have fertilizer in there, the same bag of fertilizer that gets used for landscape service is considered a different use and it has to comply with this setback. We've been encouraged through this process to permit these buildings by, by staff and we, and we, so we don't have this conflict, so code enforcement doesn't have to have the burden of coming out there saying, is that bag of fertilizer for your nursery or is it for the landscape service? That's what we're trying to get to with this variance. If we get the variance, it gets approved to be allowed for either of those uses and it takes all that anguish away from the, the future process of it. So that's the, that's the, the second variance. The, the standards here, I'm going to drag you through them because staff has no's on all of these and I just don't, don't see, see the case. Special conditions, I think I've described a lot of special conditions here where, where the situation is, it was built, ag exemption, they're operating, all of a sudden code enforcement comes in and says, wait a minute, you're not, not appropriate use, we go through the time and here we are. So the, the circumstances of changing that use is really what was triggering this and is the special circumstance of this. Structures that, that, that are in the same zoning district is how this works. If, if I could go back, I'll, I'm not going to drag it back to the aerial yet, but there's, there's other buildings right next door where there's storage- buildings right next door where there's storage buildings or structures, I don't know how they're used, that are even closer to the property line immediately to the west of us. Same zoning district. So there certainly is a circumstance here of this change of use that triggers that circumstance. The second condition is similar to that in that it goes through the sequence of the change of the use, the code enforcement going through the regulations, through the BCC, getting the use approved. And we're going through the final site plan we submitted and processed after, I think it was the third or fourth review. It was, oh, wait a minute, we've got to get a variance. So we've been in this since, I think it was July that we submitted this application for the variance. So is it a result of the action of the applicant? It's a result of the action of the changes of the code and how they are interpreted and applied for this landscape service use to be allowed onto the property? Granting the variance denied by the comp plan, that's more of a use issue. Again, this is not a use application. It's not about the use. It's about these variances. And again, about, you know, can it, does it deny the applicant from the use of that structure on the site? And again, if we draw a line to exclude that building and commit to the fact that it's wholesale nursery, it stays exactly as it is. This is truly being able to utilize that building in a reasonable manner to continue the operations on that use for both the nursery and the landscape service and not put the burden on code enforcement to determine, go back to the fertilizer bags analogy of not determine how that bag of fertilizer is really being used. It's really splitting hairs. Literal interpretation. I just described one way that if the variance is denied, it gets cured. So admitting to there are ways to avoid this. And again, I'm going back to my opening statement of technicality versus a reasonable reality of allowing the building to stay and be used that way. Literal interpretation would either force us to revising that line and committing to it to only be used for the nursery or tearing it down and rebuilding somewhere else, which I do consider to be an unnecessary and undue hardship. The minimum variance, the setback is 57.6 feet away from a survey, and that's what we're asking for. So it's definitely the minimum variance. Is it consistent with the goals and purposes of the plan and the code? The purpose of the setbacks are to separate from adjacent properties, give distance, give space. That's still there. There's a buffer there. The use to the south is not going to be impeded on at all in this. And detrimental to the public, I was actually surprised that staff even said that it was detrimental to the public. I'm not really sure how that building, it's been there for about nine years now, is detrimental to the public in this situation. It's, I go back to, my argument is that if we get the buffer variance, it keeps us from filling in a lake, which is not going to help anybody out there to plant maybe half a dozen to 10 trees, which are, there's already buffer in there. For the variance, for the setback, it's a matter of allowing us to continue to use that building in a reasonable manner that it's been used without putting that burden of code enforcement having to split the hairs on how it is being used internally. Staff has said no to all 70's criteria. I'm saying that we do meet all the 70's criteria, and the nine of you get the good fortune of determining our path forward on how we go about this. And we request your support of approving both of these variances here today.
Bradley, I'm sorry. Can you go back to the picture of the buildings with the measurements and everything? I know staff's going to do their presentation. I just-
The site plan itself?
No, no. The pictures of the building.
Oh.
Good morning, commissioners. This is Wendy Hernandez, so I'll do the presentation for staff today. The request before the board is a type 2 variance for maximum services. The site is located on the south side of Happy Hollow, approximately .31 miles south of Smith Sunday Road, and it is just a little bit over five acres in area. The variance is for both the incompatibility buffer and to reduce the rear setback for the structure. The variance, more specifically for the landscaping, is where the water body overlaps the property line in which staff is in support of the elimination of that incompatibility buffer, specifically in that area where the water overlaps. The second variance has to do with the reduction in the rear setback from 100 feet to 57 feet. The application request that staff analyzed was both for an existing structure as well as a proposed structure. So this is the, we're just hearing from Bradley this morning that he's not doing the new Staff has analyzed the variance based on those standards. So just to go a little bit back into a little bit of history, this site was added into the AGR planned unit development as a preserve parcel in 2008. In 2008, it was a nursery. And in 2008, that's 13 years ago. So it was a nursery at that time, not 15 years as a landscape service business. So I'm just putting that out there on the record as well. It was documented in the staff reports as well. The structure in itself was added to the site somewhere between 2014 and 2015. It did not exist on the site prior to that for the existing structure. So that would have been about six to seven years ago, not nine years, on the property. So I'm just putting that out there. The site has been and is currently under violation for use because the landscape service does not have the appropriate approval on the site. We did modify the code in which they are in process to get approval, and it is contingent, going through the process, this variance has to get approved as well. So they do not have the approval for landscape service as of yet, and it is deemed currently as a violation of the code. The structure itself is also in violation of the code because it is being used for landscape services, which is a commercial use, not a nursery use. So nursery has to, has special exemptions based on Florida statutes. And based on Florida statutes, staff has to analyze it to ensure what it could be exempt from as it relates to the zoning regulations. And it could relate to setback exemptions, but not entirely. We have to analyze the, what do you call it? The, I can't think of it. The best management processes of the nursery to ensure that there isn't duplicative process and duplicative regulations when it deals with agricultural uses, not landscape service because that's a commercial use. So I just want to put that a little bit out there. After I'm done with our presentation, we'll also have code enforcement speak on behalf of the violations as well. So standard A, special circumstances and conditions that exist that are peculiar to the land. Staff has found that we do not find that there are special circumstances because they've changed the use to add the landscape service out there. The change in use of the structure at minimum has to have, meet the 100-foot setback, just like any other property in the AR zoning district. The ag reserves zoning district. Special circumstances that do not result from the applicant, result from the actions of the applicant. The setback requirements have been in the code for many years. They're not new. So having a setback for that structure and not meeting the setback as a nursery use was the option of the applicant, but it is not the option as landscape service. So it has to meet code, and the applicant is aware that changing the use of that structure would have to meet code. Granting the variance is conferring a special privilege that's denied to other people. Other people that do not meet setbacks for the structures have to come before the board to seek variances as well. Literal interpretation, meeting the code will not give undue hardship because everybody else in the district has to meet the setbacks as well. So there is no undue hardship. Granting the variance is the minimum necessary. We find that variance isn't necessary because they're changing the use, so they need to meet the setbacks. Granting the variance is inconsistent with the goals and purposes of the code. As I said, the requirements of the code for setbacks have been in place, and so therefore they should be meeting the setbacks. Granting the variance injurious, approval of the reduced setbacks is considered an undue hardship and detrimental to the public welfare. We have received no comments from the public, but I can turn it over to Rick Torrance, right? And he can go over some comments as it relates to the violations that exist on the property.
Good morning, commissioners, board members, county staff, petitioners. I took a few minutes this morning to go over the aerials of this property, and it's what code enforcement affectionately refers to as a fake farm. Going back to 2014, prior to VTV buying the property, it appeared to be a legitimate nursery. They bought the property in 2014, basically took out all the growing fields, slapped this building down without permits, and began doing commercial landscape services on the property. Now, I guess they're using the nursery part of it to be able to continue that, but it should be limited somewhat. But a little history on the cases. VTV LLC, now known as Maximum Nursery Services LLC, was previously cited January 8th, 2018 for a landscape service. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't introduce myself. I'm Rick Torrance. I'm the acting code enforcement director. I've been code enforcement for 25 years. January 13th, some three years later, magistrate adjudicated the case, giving VTV LLC an additional year to come into compliance. Prior to the magistrate compliance date, VTV LLC issued a warranty deed to Maximum Nursery Services LLC. I'm not sure as to the reason for the transfer of ownership to the new LLC, but it is common practice to those in the know to transfer a property during the course of code enforcement action. This causes code enforcement to have to start its process all over again. Both Maximum Nursery and VTV listed the same corporate officer as Todd Grandy. There is a new code enforcement case initiated against Maximum Nursery LLC, and it was cited October 29th, 2021. Their new compliance date for the prohibited use of a landscape service, and this metal building we're talking about today that was erected without a permit, the compliance date is the 13th of this month. I've had the new notice of violation recorded to prevent any future transfer of the property until the violations are resolved. VTV and Maximum have been operating as a prohibited use for approximately 78 years since they bought the property in 2014. My recommendation, which is actually a code recommendation, would be to clear the site until proper zoning approvals and required site plan systems are in place. If you have any further questions.
Thank you, sir. I'll open up the, two questions by the, oh, I'm sorry. We do have two cards by the-
One of the cards, Denise Bednar does not wish to speak, but there is no indication of if she's in support or opposition of this. So I don't know if she's still here, but I'll just submit that for public records. The other person that does wish to speak, Ted Anis. If you could come up to the podium, please. State your name and address for the record.
Good morning, all. Thank you. Ted Anis, I'm a resident in that area, and I appreciate your thoughts and action as you've carried the ball forward to this point. And I want to speak, you know, in concert with the violations and the non allowable use. My wife and I have been residents there for 31 years. The houses in that area have been built in the 1970s. There are seven lots, seven residential lots that were put in place by the Bowman family, a dairy farm. Some of you may recognize the name. When we first moved in there, our neighbor, his boy Dick Bowman, said, quiet neighborhood. The next weekend, they had an end-of-the-season farm party. At 2:00 in the morning, the neighborhood wasn't so quiet. But it's been a good place to raise our children, to live with our families, to live with our neighbors. Over time, you know, change is inevitable. Some of the properties have moved from residential to alternate uses, legal, not legal, conforming, not conforming. There's four residents still there in our little enclave. And there's three lots that are being used for alternate uses, conforming or not conforming. The road that services that is a private road, 30-foot right-of-way, 15 feet, you know, to each side of the road. And it's a dirt road. It was a dirt road when we moved in there. Thanks to the Bednar family and others who have some wherewithal, the equipment and so on and so forth, we've been able to improve the road in absence of county support and help. Again, it's a private road. Was sufficient for the residential use when we were there and up to this point. Is commercial use now with some of these properties are becoming more prevalent. Fleets of vehicles are on these roads. You know, the wear and tear, the debris, the beer cans, everything that we have to endure associated with this has changed significantly over the course of our ownership and our occupancy of the area. Long story short, we feel it's an incompatible use. We would like to have a residential enclave protected by the governing laws, codes, so on and so forth, as opposed to a mixed-use enclave based on the need of a property owner to meet his needs. He's operating an off-site service as opposed to a homeowner where we're putting all our investment, our equity, and our improvements into our on-site property. So it's a bit incompatible as we look at it. There's some issues that you've heard in greater detail than I'll ever be able to give you. But as a resident there, we would like the county, please, to, you know, continue to support a small, private enclave of residential use on our south side-
Thank you, sir. Your time's up. Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay. Thank you for your time and help.
Commissioners, open it up to questions?
Well, I have a lot.
Well, then we'll start with Commissioner Scarborough.
I want to start with one, code enforcement. When was this first brought to code enforcement? And to date, have they been fined?
No. We first cited it when it was VTV in 2018. They went to magistrate. We had the case adjudicated. Prior to them running out of compliance time, they transferred warranty deed to the new company, Maximum. And as I stated, that's common practice to-
So then transferring it, then you start back to square one?
Yes, it's a new-
It doesn't continue, so?
No, ma'am. It's a new corporate entity, even though they have the same corporate officer in place. They changed the name. We have to start all over again. That's why I had the new violation notice recorded to hopefully prevent them from doing that again.
So they can keep doing it?
Yeah. So basically, they've had four years since we originally contacted them to correct the site.
And since they did not come into compliance under the old name, there's nothing that can be done? So you start all over again?
No, just that we know they're capable of playing games.
Would you put a stop to that, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So they can't transfer it again? So they can't transfer it again?
No.
Okay.
And how do we know they can't transfer it again?
Because he --
I had the violation notice recorded at the courthouse, so hopefully that would pop up in any transfer of the property.
Title insurance wouldn't -- but I'm a little puzzled. I'm with Wendy on this. I mean, there's a certain requirements for these buildings. No matter what we say or do here, they still can't be in compliance unless we gave them a walk and a pass. Is that correct? Well, I can tell you I couldn't support that.
If you grant the variance, they can leave the structure and have the use in that structure.
They knew what they bought, and they knew what it was zoned.
And they bought the property in 2014, and that's about when that structure went up, knowing that it was landscape service and not a nursery.
So it wasn't their prior?
The prior approval was a nursery. The structure didn't exist when it was a nursery.
And that structure was constructed without a permit?
Without, under the --
Was it the same owner?
-- understanding that it was an agricultural use, not a landscape service, which is commercial.
Was it the same owner prior to 214, before the building was built?
No, they bought the --
They bought it, then they built the building?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair, can I address that, or you want me to wait till the end?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Someone said it's a private road. Who owns the road?
Hi. It's really a publicly platted road created by the Palm Beach Farms Platt One. It's dedicated to the public. It's just when they say "private," it was never accepted by any governmental agency for maintenance.
So they're maintaining it themselves?
Correct.
So the county doesn't pay any money to maintain the road whatsoever?
Correct.
And if they have the ag exemption, they're paying hardly any taxes. So why would Palm Beach County go in and do road improvements?
That's correct, too. Yeah.
And they have, they're using it as a landscape service. What's the difference between landscape business versus, or landscape use versus ag use? Ag use, they don't pay taxes, and if it's landscape, they do pay taxes?
Well, an agricultural operation is growing something. You're growing plants, you're growing vegetables or plants, or you're growing animals, or you're having some sort of agricultural use, and that's subject to very specific rules with the state on supporting that type of operation. A landscape service, they typically can have staging areas, and they could have growing areas on their property for plants that they install at various locations. They do, a lot of times, they do their own cuttings for perennials and annuals, and they, or staging areas for inclusive plants, for example, and then they install those out in the field. That's very typical. However, the landscape service, the primary income of those companies are going out off-site to doing the horticulture. So they're doing off-site is where they're trimming the bushes, or the trees, or the maintenance and all that. An agricultural operation, the primary use of the land, any of the equipment, the fertilizers and such, will be on the actual land. And so that's where we're looking at the distinction between a nursery and a landscape service, is those vehicles are leaving the site to do the agricultural type of aspects. It's not on the actual land. The land itself would have some staging area, some growing area, typically with some of the landscape service, but not the bulk of the, you know, any lawn equipment and all that is not going to be used on the site. It's off-site, and that's where we see the difference in the uses.
Is there any growing on that property? Any landscape growing on that property?
On the air photo, there's a tiny corner. A lot of the green space on this property is around the former home at the northern end, and there's vegetation and trees and buffering along. The most of the growing area appears to be in the southwestern corner. And in the past, with the prior owner in 2013, the bulk of the property was either natural area, or the house, or nurseries. I wish we had, you know, the older photos. And don't forget, this is an agricultural preserve, preserve area, an agricultural reserve, rather, preserve area. The property owner, prior to the current owner, BTG or Maxim, went to and sold the development rights of this property to be a preserve area for an agricultural PUD. So they were, they sold the five acres, five units, to another site with the idea that it would be kept as a preserve. And it was a nursery, and then it changed over to the nursery slash now landscape service use.
I have a question. Sorry, were you finished with? Okay. I have a question for the gentleman with the codes. So the timeline from when this property, just to get this clear again, was sold, the 2013, to when the structure was put up, was approximately how long?
Nine years. Yeah. The structure went up. Where'd my notes go?
The structure appeared in the aerials approximately 2014, right when the current owner bought the property.
So later, okay.
So he caused the, he caused the violation. You know, he caused his own problem, basically.
Okay, I'm just kind of trying to get in my mind the intent of the purchase. Do you know, right? So, and then when you found, they were found in violation, it's been approximately six to seven, six to seven years that they've been in violation?
Well, looking at the aerials, you can tell from the aerials in 2014, they put that building in, they removed all the growing fields and just basically moved landscape equipment in there. And, you know, looking at the aerials, it's evident that that's all they were doing. That was seven or eight years ago, but we only first noticed it in 2018 when we originally cited it.
All right. And there has been zero attempt to bring themselves to code up until the time where now, like, we're still continuing since they've changed the name, and now, so there's been no attempt?
Well, Bradley did a site plan some time ago, but I don't know what happened with that. I know there were some issues with it, but, you know, we're here today, you know, still dealing with it, basically.
Okay.
So in 2018, we were working with industry on our use regulations project in which landscape service was kind of tabled, and we met and discussed that code revision for two years and ended up getting adopted in 2020, I think it was, at three different, three or four different ordinances relative to landscape services. The last one related to the AGR PUDs was the last one, and how we called out, I believe, 28 different parcels that are recognized to have landscape services that are in preserve areas, as long as they are with a nursery. They have to have both uses on the property. Yeah.
One question I have. How much do they owe in fines for violations to date?
Zero.
What?
It's zero because what Mr. Torrance was trying to say is, right before they were supposed to start accruing fines, they switched names.
Oh, they did that right as they returned?
So it's zero. That's why the new violation notice or new adjudication is being recorded, so if they were to try to do that again, it would show up in some title reports and it would come run with the land. So --
Very clever. We should figure out a way to put a stop to that in the future, automatically file when these things are done.
Bradley, did you want to, you said you wanted to respond to a couple of things?
Yeah. I'm going to start out with saying my client is not a criminal. He bought this property in 2014, which is what staff is saying. We agree to that. He built the building in 2014, and my math was wrong with the number of years, trying to do math on the fly. It's not a good idea. It is seven years. When he bought the property, he bought it, not only the property, but he bought businesses that were on the property that included a nursery, and he, and that owner rented the property out to landscaper people, now called landscape maintenance. He didn't know, any of these guys that I've represented now for a number of years didn't know. It doesn't seem like anybody wants to accept that, but they didn't know that they were in violation until January of 2018, when code enforcement gave them that violation. Has he made any attempt to fix it? He's been involved from day one of drafting regulations, going through that whole process that took a number of years, as Wendy indicated. We got to a point, he didn't know whether he was going to have the ability to even be here and try to get these uses approved, until we went through that process, which was adopted in 2020 by the Board of County Commissioners. Again, this is not a use issue. It's coming down to these two variances. So when he bought it, he thought he was buying a landscape business as well as a property with a nursery on it. Has it expanded? Yeah. Everybody wants to grow their business, but it's, since the violation, he's really, he's continued his business, but it doesn't, it hasn't grown, and he hasn't added plant material in there. Why spend that money if he doesn't know if he's going to be able to use that property at all?
Are you telling me he bought this business like these pictures show with all these trucks on it?
I don't even know what those pictures are, Mr. [inaudible].
Well, a picture of his property in aerial with dozens of trucks and trucks on it, from the landscape, it looks like a landscape.
Is that this property? I don't even know if that's this property. So I've never seen the, I don't even know where those are coming from. My point being is, he's trying to, now we have a site plan application that's been in the process for about, I don't know, six, eight months to get through. We are trying to get through the steps so he can comply, so we can resolve the code enforcement issue, to follow the regulations that the Board of County Commissioners approved. So all of those, all of those factors, it's, I know this guy, you know, and it just, it comes across like this was, you know, a premeditated thought process to avoid. It wasn't that way.
When you buy a property, you not only have the obligation to do due diligence, the title work, you also have an obligation to do due diligence to find out what the usages are and what's permissible.
Agreed. And if --
You can't play dumb to that.
And if you look at business tax receipts, occupational licenses that have been issued, not only for the prior property owner, but then been issued business tax receipts as he's continued his business there, if you're in that business, you're not a land planner that goes through this. I wouldn't have questioned it. I grew up on a farm. My father would be the same way. If he gets a piece of paper that says that he can be a landscaper, he's going to be a landscaper. And he has that.
That's 1957. This is 2022. Can't be quite that naive today.
What's 1957?
The fact that just buy a piece of property and just go to town with it.
No, he didn't. He saw business tax receipts that had those businesses on it, so.
But I think what Wendy was saying, just to end this, that for him to be, even have the opportunity to do this in the correct manner, one, the building's in the wrong, has the wrong setbacks, but forgetting that for the moment, he would also have to have some agricultural going on there, which he has none according to those pictures.
And that's what we're trying to implement, so we know --
So you're going to go back and start planting and so on?
Yes.
But from six to seven years, the gentleman was notified approximately six to seven years ago that he was in violation, very clearly regarding the --
Three years ago.
No? Okay, all right, so if you're even, say, three years ago?
Yeah.
Okay, even a week ago? And so, but he did nothing. Like, so now he's going to start to plant something to attempt to be in, you know, in code? Like, I'm just finding that a little hard to believe, to be quite honest with you.
So in those, in that time period, we went through, how long was the time period, Wendy? Two and a half years? For the code, right?
Right.
You know, I think from an industry standpoint, it seems a lot longer than that. But that was part of, first of all, would it be allowed? Period. Second of all, if it is allowed, what are the regulations and the criteria that he has to follow to recreate that? And that's how we're here today. That got established in January of 2020, when the Board of County Commissioners adopted those regulations. We submitted our site plan application to follow those regulations right after that. Through that, through that process, it was then determined that we needed to go through this variance application for these two items.
Wendy, what was that?
So short of him spending a lot of money to plant trees in these areas that he may or may not get to use as a business, it was a business decision.
Bradley, is there a percentage of the site that would have to be nursery?
That's what I was going to ask.
Seventy percent.
Seventy percent. Well, based on the photos that I just saw that came through here, I want to question how you could plant 70% of that property and still house the amount of equipment, trucks, trailers, tree trimmers, your staff that's working nodes with 25, 30 cars that I could count. It doesn't look like there's any room on site. It's all being used as landscape services. No, not your photos here. I'm talking about the photos that they just, I don't know where they came from. Have you seen those?
Who they are. I have never seen them. I don't know what they --
I would suggest you take a look at those.
Yeah, you may want to see these photos.
Then you could maybe answer that. Because I don't know where they came from.
This is something that I've argued through this whole process of, everybody is looking at it as it is today. I'll admit, today, it has far more on it than what these regulations are going to control.
So is he going to take and move his landscape services business elsewhere?
No.
Because I don't see how you're going to accommodate what's in those aerial photos and plant 70% of the site.
The area in green on the site plan, which is what we're trying to get to, is 70%. That's been agreed to by staff.
Okay, where is all the staff parking?
The area in white is what's going to be controlled for the landscape service. Is he going to have to downscale? Probably so. But at least he gets to use his property for the uses that he thought he was buying in the beginning.
I thought you just said he was trying to upscale his business. He was trying to grow his business. That's the goal of every business. That's what you said.
What I said is, yes, it grew from the time that he purchased and from the prior owners to now.
I guess what we were trying to say is that --
But now he's got a piece of property that he doesn't know, can he run his business there or can't he? And we're trying to get through that process, in whatever form it is, in these regulations that honestly, I don't think there's been any of the landscapers that have been able to get through the process to actually implement these regulations, to see what the controls are going to be. Mr. Beatty, to answer your question, I don't know if this pointer works or not on here, but there's, the little white notch that goes off to the left is a parking area, and then, and down the right side, there's, I think it's 35 parking spaces. It's too fuzzy for my eyes to have there.
What are you talking about?
There's, is it this one? Got it there. Here we go. So there's parking here.
Right.
There's parking here.
Uh huh.
There's some office staff parking up here. The area that the trucks are required to be parked in when they come in at night is within this dash line here. So, but again, we're getting stretched out onto the use, which those, you know, from the comments that we've received from staff after several months now and different reviews, this is our remaining issue to get resolved for the site plan to be approved.
I'm actually going to agree with Bradley. This is a very difficult process, and the reason it's very difficult is because you're trying to put commercial uses in residential areas. Therein lies the problem. So we've tried to get creative in which to allow these commercial uses in residential areas. However, you have to look at the impacts, and we've tried to minimize those impacts by shrinking down that area. But also to put into context, a single-family residence has about 10 trips a day. GL was up here talking about it, roughly 10 trips a day. I think if you were to count the parking spots and the amount of trucks that are here, the amount of trips are exponential, and this is not just this property. It's all the landscape services that we had the same issue from. From day one, it's been the issue. That's why we've never had problems when it's been nurseries, because there hasn't been the amount of traffic and trips. So if there's a mechanism, and that's what we've tried to do, by shrinking this down, and maybe Bradley can agree on a number of trucks or a number of trips to help lessen it, then I don't think we'd have that much of a problem. But, you know, that's their business decision.
Yeah, I think it's the point that Mark was trying to make and what I was trying to make, and I think Sherry's saying the same thing. We need a commitment, if he wants us to, if he wants me to approve it, to downsize because what, if those pictures are accurate, okay? And assume they are, there's no way you're going to get 10 pounds of poop in a one-pound box.
And I don't know, as it stands now, how many employees/trucks can fit legally on the site.
Yeah. So maybe he needs to come back with a plan that works.
I think this plan potentially works. I think this plan potentially works, it's just, I'm just looking at something that's very, very tiny, but...
Now we're getting caught up in the use in the site plan. This, this is a variance application. The use in the site plan is, is allowed by regulations that the county commissioners have already adopted, and, and the, the issues, and thank you for the acknowledgement, Ramsey, that they, for, for starters, the, the use itself of landscape service by code really should be considered an industrial use. It's, it's the only zoning district that it's permitted by right is in an industrial area. If it's in a commercial area, it still has to go through a conditional use, BCC approval. So it's a little misleading of a commercial use, so it's, it's more of an industrial use, and I know county commissioners are talking about those now in, in the ag reserve. Don't want to get distracted into that either. But the, the fact is, is in 2020, the BCC adopted these regulations that will allow these 28 parcels to go through a site plan application to, for these uses. And the, and, and also again, it, let me break this apart, maybe to, to help get to a conclusion. There's the two variances. There's the variance for the buffer along that west side of the lake, that one, I think staff's in agreement, we're in agreement, and if we can get past that one, then it's, then it's the variance on the building, and you can make a decision there, and if the decision go, does not go our way, we're just going to have to modify our plan to make it work.
Yeah.
Practicality versus reasonable reality.
Yeah, I think we've gone down an emotional rabbit hole, and, because we do want to protect the residents and the neighbors, et cetera, and, and we naturally have gone down that, that rabbit hole, but, you know, what is before is, are these two variances. And the variance for the first one, I can support, so I think that is, to me, is a no-brainer. And the question for me is the second one, which is the setback. And, you know, there's a lot of history involved with, with how that's evolved, but if you take all that apart, would we still accept that as a, as an acceptable variance or not? Is there enough of a hardship? And I'm just taking it back to the very basic bones here, without all the emotional aspects.
What's the hardship?
And I can't, I can't support it, Bradley, I, just on its, on its basic merits of that.
So Bradley, you, can we go back to the photograph, please, of the building with the setbacks on it? So during your presentation, while you're getting to that, you said that there, that it would apply undue hardship on the homeowner to move the building, or to create a new building. It appeared in those photos that there was a concrete slab that existed, or that is there onsite underneath the metal building, what appears to be a metal-structured building. Can you give me the dimensions of that structure? Lengthwise, anyway?
I think, I think the pad itself is like 40 by 80. Pad itself is 40 by 80, and the buildings, the, the building that we're talking about sits on the, the eastern side of that pad.
Okay, and what is the undue hardship that you spoke to of moving that structure?
It's not supposed to be one, but, but cost, the permitting...
But you already have a concrete slab in place, I mean, you're only talking about, you're literally talking less than 50 feet, you have to move the building, it's a metal structure, you can take it down and put it back up, and the slab is already in place in front of where it's at, you just close in the end.
Yeah.
Well, there could be structural, there's further structural foundations and things they'd have to look at, you can't just set up...
For code and permitting, yes.
Metal building on a slab.
Also, Commissioner, Commissioner Kern, so this is the building, steady my hand, and that's the pad. If we, if we just took that building and moved it up to meet the setback, it would go beyond the pad.
Okay.
So it's, it's starting over.
So that's what you're claiming as the hardship, is you'd have to extend the pad and add any appropriate footers and get it permitted?
It's that as, as well as, and like I said, I mean, one way that we can deal with that building is leave it there and use it for the nursery, and that's, that's allowed. And then it's a matter of, of that fine line for Mr. Torrance to be able to walk in that building and determine if the bag of fertilizer is for the nursery, or if it's for landscape service.
That's a use issue?
Yes, that's a use issue, right.
That's a use issue, so... Yeah, so the, the issue is the setback, which is meeting 100-foot setback, or meeting the 57-foot setback.
Absolutely. I was just trying to determine what the hardship was that he was talking about, that's...
Right, and he has to get a building permit.
Yep.
It stays at the 57-foot.
Regardless.
Yeah.
You know, one of the issues that I see is, even if we deny the variance, he could go back and move the building, and he still has the uses, correct? He can run a nursery, he can run a landscape service business. He just has to move the building. So now what you've done is, when I look at these photos with all these trucks that he has, trailers, exterior porta-potties, so now you have all that backyard back there. So now you take all this equipment, and you're pushing it into the backyard, because I assume there's not a setback, there must be some setback, but it's probably minimal where he could park trucks back there with noise, and that property to the south of him, looks to me like that's prime-time residential development property at some point.
Yeah, you missed that part. That's a preserved parcel with conservation easement.
It is a preserved parcel?
It is.
Okay, so that's not going to bother anybody? Okay.
And as far as the trucks go, the, the dash, the dash line here, in that area, is where the trucks go. The trucks have to meet the setbacks.
Okay.
So there's circulation around the building, that's, that's allowed. They have to be able to get around there, but where the parts truck at, truck at night, park at night, is, has to meet the setbacks, and that's, that, that boundary has been determined based on that.
Okay.
Are there, are there any other questions by the commission regarding the two type-two variances in front of us? No? Okay, so we have two different motions to consider. Is there a motion on the first type-two variance to eliminate a portion of the incompatibility buffer?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution approving a type-two variance to eliminate a portion of the incompatibility buffer, subject to the conditions of approvals indicated in Exhibit C1.
Second?
Motion made by Commissioner Pavlik, seconded by Commissioner Beatty, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes eight to one. There is a second motion? Or is there a second motion, sir?
I make a motion to adopt the resolution denying the type-two variance to reduce the setbacks for the structure.
Motion for denial of the second type-two variant. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Pavlik, seconded by Commissioner Burke, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you, Bradley. All right, so we move on to comments, or I'm sorry, is there any other, any other items, Steph?
No other items.
Wendy? No other items? Moving on to comments, Mr. Banks, county attorney?
No comments, just wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Okay, Happy New Year, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Lisa, any, any comments by zoning director? Any comments?
No comments.
Okay.
We will be doing voting of chair and vice chair next month, just FYI.
I'm sorry?
Voting of chair and vice chair next month.
Okay, great, I'm fired, I understand.
Thank you.
Commissioner, any comments? Fantastic. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Caliendo, seconded by Commissioner Burke, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a great day, we'll see you February 3rd.